First videotape set up and we are ready to go there. And this is from last night, St. Paul Public Schools. And this is, keep in mind when you watch this, that what the school district is doing here, you know, this is the school district that spends about $630-40 million a year. They're moving towards a billion. And they have no time for the citizens or those people that have legitimate input into the formulation of policy, the way the schools are run. And think of this, that for the school district, it's, they don't want to hear from people. They're shutting off input for the sake of timing. Isn't that wonderful? And folks, I'm telling you, maybe it's a school district, maybe the school board needs to have timing. Watch this and then we'll talk about this. All right, go ahead, play this piece.
Each presentation will be timed. We now have a new device this evening for the timing and I will describe that at this time. The black box on the edge next to the microphone will show you your timing. It has three lights on top. The first light will turn green when you start. An amber light and a chime will occur when you have one minute remaining. Several chimes will sound and the light will change to red when the time is up. So we ask that when the light turns red, speakers will be asked to complete their statement and allow others their turn to speak. Generally, speakers will be called in the order of names received. However, if the sign and log indicates there are a number of speakers on the same subject, we'll try to group them together by subject and call individuals up as you've signed in. Once that subject area has been covered, other speakers will then be called in the order that they've signed in. We ask that you begin by stating your name.
In a minute, replay that. Go back and play number one. And the reason I say that is, listen, when we replay this now, the oohs and ahs and the laughing, especially by the superintendent. Now, this is a big insult and game to these people. You know, we don't think the citizens, or the public, or the taxpayers, or the teachers that we have so intimidated to not coming down here because you have to remember, if you show up down there and you're part of the staff, you're going to be tagged as a troublemaker. So, you know, people watch, I've been told, teachers say, "Bob, we watch your show because we can't go down there because they'll tag us as a troublemaker and our career will be jeopardized." And they said, you know, the other thing with St. Paul Schools is they don't have any archived videos that when these meetings are over or on, we can't get to them. It's a very bad system up there. We can't even go on the website and readily find how to get to the board or the board agenda. And especially, Bob, we count on your show to give us this information. And you'll hear, not only do you get it right from the inside insight, but you can go on YouTube, just put in "Bob Zick Show" and you can pull up some of these clips. But now, we're going to replay this so you can hear the giggles and the laughs and "Ah, ah, ah, we're really sticking it to the public now." We got the green light, the yellow light, the red light, and then we got the buzzer and then we got that, you know, that hook. What was that show where they used to come out with the hook and grab you and pull you out of there? That's what St. Paul Schools is about now. And then we're going to show you more. I mean, this, you have to remember, these school districts all belong to the same school district associations. They're out of the same playbook. Then you have the superintendents association. And remember how these superintendents have all had to go through that process of getting that license and that makes sure that they think just the way the system wants and that they're going to follow in the marching order. So, all right, let's replay this. Watch this again, listen for the giggles and laughs.
Each presentation will be timed. We now have a new device this evening for the timing and I will describe that at this time. The black box on the edge next to the microphone will show you your timing. It has three lights on top. The first light will turn green when you start. An amber light and a chime will occur when you have one minute remaining. Several chimes will sound and the light will change to red when the time is up. So we ask that when the light turns red, speakers will be asked to complete their statement and allow others their turn to speak. Generally, speakers will be called in the order of names received. However, if the sign and log indicates there are a number of speakers on the same subject, we'll try to group them together by subject and call individuals up as you've signed in. Once that subject area has been covered, other speakers will then be called in the order that they've signed in. We ask that you begin by stating your name.
All right, so it doesn't matter how important or how relevant the issue that you're talking about to the education of the students or the way the school district is operated, no basis at all. Just watch that, green light, yellow light, red light, and then ding ding ding, you're out of here. Doesn't matter, care less how important it is, you're out of here. All right, now, let's go right into the next clip here.
Good evening, school board superintendent and administration. I do want to comment that your new timing system is most insulting and demeaning and it's a real disrespect for your public and staff. Here tonight to talk about three issues. First of all, commend the superintendent for being at the commencement, St. Paul Technical College, last night. I think you could have honored the students a little more by having stayed through the passing out of the diplomas. Because of this timing you do, people can see the full discussion.
As the superintendent gave the commencement address for the graduates of St. Paul Technical College and, you know, even the president stays for the awarding of the diplomas. But the, you know, after the superintendent made her adulations pretty much about St. Paul Schools and herself, of course, she's gone. Doesn't matter, it's not about the students, it's not about honoring them with their diplomas. Can't be bothered, gone. All right, let's finish the rest of it.
On St. Paul Neighborhood Network, Monday nights, 7 to 8 p.m. Or they can go on YouTube under the Bob Zick Show. And I, you know, it's, part of it is because of the public and the teachers have been intimidated by this administration and don't feel free to come up here and talk. I want to commend the person that talked about, and the real emphasis should be on, and I've talked about it up here before, the way, the hostile work environment, the lack of morale in the schools. And now you came out with this incentive program, which you should have had in the first place, instead of the way you forced teachers out and by putting them on individual improvement plans. That was despicable, of course. How are you going to make that whole now? How are you going to go back and make restitution, Superintendent Silva? That's the question here. Now, the other thing for the board, I've asked for three months to have a meeting with the superintendent. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been stolen from this school district and I, unless the board finds this insignificant, I would like to, am asking the board to direct your sole employee to schedule a meeting with me so we can discuss this. I think that we need to have a few more minutes for the public and teaching staff or whoever it may be to come up and address this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, first of all, last board meeting that I was at, there was two people from the public, I was one. And this board meeting, Tuesday night, there was either four or five only. So you get two minutes. I mean, really, folks, is that such a big intrusion on that $630 million operation to hear from the taxpayers, the public, or the staff? I mean, it's insulting. Now, the issue I was talking about there is, remember, over the last six months, I've talked about the way the bureaucrats down there, and it's all under the superintendent and the school board, it was really left out of the decision-making process on this. But the district, under the direction of the superintendent, created this hostile work environment. The morale in the schools and amongst the teachers, the only ones that were not included into the input of how to make the system work the best, were, they were subject, the teaching staff was subject to this, these threats, where they would put teachers on the individual improvement plan and then threaten them with being fired and loss of their teaching license, even the loss of their pension. So first, they created this atmosphere of fear for about six months, had the teachers in this total atmosphere of fear. So, and they pushed out how many ever teachers and forced them to take their, it was all, for the most part, almost exclusively, the senior teachers, the ones that were the mentors of the younger teachers, the ones that actually were engaged in helping the new teachers, the ones with PhDs and master's license, because, of course, they were the most expensive. So we got to push them out. So they pushed them out. This whole attitude of, or culture of fear took over in the schools and now they come along with this incentive to retire. You know, first you put fear in them and then that's going to really make them really think, boy, do we want to work here anymore. So the, my understanding of this incentive plan is their high salary, which would be their current salary, would be for five years, they get 15% of that salary. So if they're making $70,000, that's $10,500 a year that they will receive as an incentive bonus for retiring. Of course, what will the district gain by doing that? They go from a $70,000 teacher to a $35,000 teacher. One teacher did get up and said, you know, "How do you go back now? You need to go back and the teachers that you forced out, the teachers that notified you prior to December as required that they were going to retire this year." For the most part, the ones that I knew did that were because of the fear and intimidation. How are you going to make those teachers whole? How are you going to go back and fix what you did to them? You should take the money because they're looking at, they need 100 teachers to take advantage of this now. And I don't call it taking advantage, I call it self-preservation, that if there's some monies that were allocated for this, that they go back, make rest, the superintendent, Silva, go back and make restitution for all those teachers they harmed. So we'll go with that. That's the discussion for St. Paul Schools tonight. More discussions coming, that hundred thousand, hundred, hundreds of thousands of dollars in theft, that we might look for in the other press, we're having some conversations. School district didn't want to deal with it. Silva, just, you know, it's not on her agenda, doesn't matter. I would think the school board, it would matter to the school board when they're coming up with the kind of budget holes that they have, not hundreds of thousands, but millions, that they would want to take a look at the theft of hundreds of thousands of dollars. All right, now, we're going to go, and I'm going to have a guest come out here and why don't we, as the guest come out, why don't we play the first clip here? And this is also about another school district.
Should we talk about Wykoff?
Oh, yeah, I want to make a mention here of, this staff reminded me here that should make a comment about John Wykoff. Of course, John Wykoff, there's been other news releases now that was successful in getting out, turning back the assault from the Maplewood City Council and the Jehovah Witness that had, from the information we have, had an agenda to harm Mr. Wykoff because he didn't want to be a member of the cult anymore, didn't want to be a member of Jehovah Witnesses. And so they targeted him and the way they did that is they, in conjunction with the Maplewood City Council, especially Kathy Juneman and Will Rosbach and, you know, the whole gang up there, John Nephew, James Lannis and even Marv Copan, they went, they went, Marv's a little clean from this, but the rest of them especially, went and put a restraining order against Mr. Wykoff. They used the made-up testimony from the Jehovah Witness and on that basis harmed Mr. Wykoff, another attempt to silence critics. You know, this is, Maplewood has done this before and the judges have gone back at Maplewood and pulled off those restraining orders. But Mr. Wykoff was harmed for six months. So, you know, it's okay to be a deer poacher up there like the mayor, no consequence. Or it's all right to be dingy like Kathy Juneman. Or it's all right to need attention and crave attention and always, you know, pontificate like pseudo-intellectual John Nephew. Or then you have Mr. Lannis that has had the sole agenda to promote his lifestyle and that included the creation of the, what they call the Human Rights Commission, but they forget that the human rights are inalienable rights and so those are not the rights that government can intervene in. It should have been called the Civil Rights Commission because those are the rights that were created by government. And so, a big problem up there. But anyway, so Mr. Wykoff, I just wanted an update that he's doing well and he is still engaged. So we will be hearing from John. Of course, John has that wonderful sign on his fence when you drive south on McKnight, south of Larpenter, "Inside Insight." You know, that's his freedom of speech and he's making a political statement there to, you know what, folks, be educated, watch Inside Insight. All right, I think what we want to do is start the first clip and then we'll introduce the, our guest.
Did you give him your name? Where is it? Go ask him to put your name up.
So we have an obligation to meet your standards as you've articulated them, as long as they're reasonable. And conversely, the city has an obligation to follow through with its code and to approve a conditional use permit that demonstrates based on a written record before you that it can meet the standards that are presented by the staff. Public comments are a legitimate part of the process, they're to be encouraged, they're certainly welcome this evening and I imagine there'll be one or two of them. But I would just caution you that public comments and opinions expressed as part of the public commentary, those are not facts. They're not the decision point that the city can use as a basis for approving or denying a conditional use permit. They're informative, certainly, as they should be, but they can't be the basis for denial. And I say that respectfully, given the opinions that folks are entitled to express to you this evening. But I want you to understand that because that's an important distinction that goes back to what I said a couple of minutes ago, which is, any decision you make tonight, and we hope you'll recommend approval of this project this evening, but any decision you make has to be based on a written record that's been presented to you as evidence, as facts. Your attorney can comment on.
All right, we're going to explain that, but with us tonight is Lauren Sederstrom. And Lauren is, happens to be the chair of the Grant City Planning Commission. And the piece you saw was from, let's see, what night was that meeting, Monday night?
Monday night to 16, yes.
Lauren, it's good to have you on here.
Thank you for.
To help go through, explain these clips we're going to play. Now, that was the.
That was the attorney for the school district and.
Mottamidi School.
Mottamidi School District. And as I've heard, they're gathering data for a potential lawsuit. I don't know if his aim was intimidation, it certainly didn't have that effect upon me, but it's very interesting to note that he's saying the only information that we can go by is the stuff that they've given us. And observations, like for example, I made the observation that with the open enrollment is not an issue for us. However, the traffic that results for the open enrollment is because the amount of traffic affects public safety. They're placing a school on two county roads with 55, 60 mile an hour speed limits and then they're going to introduce all these cars coming in and out. Well, normally.
And buses.
And buses, okay. Normally, there are, school buses bring all the kids in. Well, unfortunately, if it's here in open enrollment, they don't ride the school bus. How are they going to get there? Obviously, the parents are going to bring them. And they're talking 30, close to 30%, okay, 27, it varies from their school to school. The other thing is they're going to have there is an early childcare program. None of those children ride a school bus, there's going to be approximately 100 there. So being conservative in saying there's, and I got these numbers from the superintendent, which is not.
Mark Larson.
Mark Larson, that he said there's going to be approximately 600 K2 at this school. And if you go with just one quarter of that, that means 150 cars coming in, then you add another 100 cars for the early childhood development, then you add another 60 cars for employees, that's over 300 cars that'll be coming in, then you add 37 buses. And that's a significant amount of traffic. And I guess the serious concern of the planning commission is they had this plan to go over the Gateway Trail, which is a linear park that runs from.
St. Paul.
St. Paul up to Pine Point.
Snow water.
And about Highway 36, they've added a horse lane. So there's not only a paved lane for rollerbladers, bicyclers, walkers, whatever, there's another road there for horses. And I have horses, I have a small horse farm. And believe me, horses and buses do not mix. A horse is a flight animal, it sees something big and scary and it wants to run whether you're on its back or not. I mean, there's a few horses that are well-trained, that wouldn't be a problem, but I've had an experience where I was walking a horse and a school bus came by, I went tumbling and the horse went running.
And people need to remember that, you know, this is the city of Grant we're talking about. And it's a gateway trail where it enters with Jamica and what's the other, Jeffries?
Yep, Jeffries.
So you have two streets, you have the gateway trail, you have the horse trail, and now the school district at that same crossing wants to introduce school buses and automobiles. And, you know, folks, not a good, good idea. And the DNR doesn't like it, the Gateway Trail Association doesn't like it, Washington County is kind of forced to have to accept it, their traffic department. So this is what you have, but in watching that clip, that's the attorney from the school district that came to intimidate. You know, the inference was if you don't give us this conditional use permit, you're going to be in court. And then he also insulted, I mean, these people, folks, if you're the public or you're the taxpayer or you're the citizen, you don't count. Did you hear that attorney say that the only one that can present facts for the planning commission to use is our paid consultants? Citizens, taxpayers don't have the ability to present facts, all they can do is come up and talk about their feelings. What a bunch of, I mean, isn't that the feeling you got from this guy?
Yes, it was, they were very, the other interesting thing I want to point out is under 12, Highway 12, which is one of the main roads of this school, they built a tunnel, okay? Over 96.
For the Gateway Trail.
For the Gateway Trail. Over Highway 96, they have a bridge, they're currently installing a bridge over Manning. This is the only county road that does not have a bridge or a tunnel. And now they're going to, they're trying to complicate it and make it terribly unsafe and it's kind of like, we don't care, we spent 70 minutes discussing this.
That one intersection.
That one intersection. And I calmly pointed out to the county that he used secondary data. He did not have primary data to show about the car count. Plus, I also pointed out that this is for next year. They, they're, at the planning commission, I made the point on one of the blueprints, when I finally got the large-size blueprint so I could read them, that it said, "Proposed school three through five." And I asked the attorney, "Are we okaying the second part of it?" And he said, "No." But it does indicate that the school district is.
In other words, they're going to expand.
They're going to expand that school.
The new elementary school that they're going to build, $18 million, they want to expand it.
Make it larger, bring, evidently, if they're three through five, they're probably going to be up to 1,000 students at some point in time. And then the traffic implications for that would be, if they're running, their goal is to have 30% open enrollment, there's 300 cars there, plus how many buses, plus early childhood. And we don't know what the future plans, that one point in time, they talked about a hockey arena, another point in time, they, someone had said about for the senior citizens. And so what we're dealing with is a traffic problem and that is definitely a health and safety issue that we're going to have to deal with. And I think we have to look into the future, you know.
What's, I mean, what this really is, is the nose of the camel under the tent. Once the nose is under there, pretty soon the whole camel's going to be in there. It's like the proverbial snowball rolling down the hill. Once this stuff gets started, you can't stop it. And they already have their attorneys there. And folks, you have to remember, well, that school district, Mottamidi School District, of course, is Mottamidi, Grant, Hugo, Willerney, Delwood, Birchwood, White Bear Lake, Lake Elmo, Pine Springs, not, there's, some of it isn't the entire city, it's just a portion, like say, White Bear Lake. But that's what makes this school district up. And then when I took a look, I met with the, well, the financial business administrator for the North St. Paul School District, whose wife is, holds the same position in the Mottamidi School District. We had a couple-hour discussion on the cost of open enrollment, where the, how the money follows a student, how it doesn't, that the school district that's, that taking all this open enrollment, you have to remember, statewide, the average is about 4% in a district is open enrollment. Mottamidi, it's already 25, 26% and it's going up. In the elementary school, there's 161 students at Wildwood Elementary Open Enrollment, OH Anderson, this is only at the elementary level now, is 167 students total for the two elementary student schools, 328 students in open enrollment. Now, that precipitated building this new elementary school. And we have phone calls and we'll take phone calls soon as I finish this point. The issue becomes, not only is there that cost that, you know, not all the money follows these students that come from other districts, so the home district retains some, the open enrollment district has to pick up additional costs. The issue then becomes, yes, I smell that too, something smells like something's burning back here. The issue becomes an $18 million school that, one of the sole bases for building it became the issue of that the Wildwood School was built on a. it became the issue of that the Wildwood School was built on a swamp area, and it was settling. Well, school districts come up with great reason to build new schools. So, now, where are they building the new $18 million elementary school? On a swamp area, the lowest part, the spot where adjacent to the toxic waste dump. You're going to hear a clip about why, in the spec plans, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Weren't the information from the three borings closest to where the elementary school, why weren't they provided in the spec book? We'll show you that clip. So, if you take this 18 million, and we've seen the figures now, that until the cost of that school is paid off, the debt service, along with the initial 18 million, is going to be over 36 million. That's what that school's going to cost as planned right now. But like Lauren says, they have intentions to expand, and so, if you take the 36 million divided by the 328 open enrollment elementary students that are in the district, that's $110,000 per student for the open enrollment. You know, folks, this district, they had OH Anderson, they could have expanded that, 25 acres in a safe neighborhood, not on two highways. Lauren?
Should we take a call? Let's take a call. Good idea.
All right, let's take a call. Caller, are you with us? Question or comment?
I've got a comment for you, if you don't mind taking it.
Sure.
I read the White Bear Press today, and it said, "Suns from expected the district will need to borrow in July and August, and again from March to June, to June in 2012." She estimated the interest alone will be nearly $14,000. Now, the next thing I'd like to state is, one of the school board members, Steve Wogomot, wrote in a deal in December of 2009, he said, "The foregoing is my opinion. Financial issues are real, the district is not wealthy, lower revenue and high costs are not sustainable." It said, "Moda Midae delivery the most expensive among 19 districts studied." And it also, he stated, "The Moda Midae middle school provides the least core infrastructure of 19 districts studied." It said that the cost of $6,000 each, 58 students, would be need to offset the annual cost. The last line that's really interesting, it says, "A proposal to use open enrollment to increase class size in order to institutionalize inefficiency would be wholly inconsistent with the justification for open enrollment and would breach faith with the community." This is my opinion. If you notice, when you pulled up that attorney on the television, he was a school member, a board member, sitting right behind the attorney. Two years ago, he said it would be a breach of faith with the community to have open enrollment, and behind that in parentheses, "This is my opinion." Why is he now not showing us the savings that would be saved by merging the Wildwood Elementary School to the OH site? Because they plan on closing that perfectly good school at OH, which is on a safe site, has not got any taxes on it, and we could save an extra principal, secretary, a whole janitorial staff. We could merge the two schools onto a safe site and save tons of money. We don't have the money. We're borrowing it to get through this year. Thank you.
Caller, thank you. We do, we do have that letter, of course. Hang up the phone. There's the letter, right there, that the caller spoke of, and of course, the caller is right. Steve Wogomot is, you'll see him on some of the upcoming clips. He was sitting to the left of the attorney that was speaking, had a white shirt on. I don't know if we're going to play a clip by him, but he's the point man because he's on the school board, and he's also an attorney, Wogomot. And so, but here, the caller is absolutely right. Lauren, you want to read it? All right, here, I'll read it. "A proposal to use open enrollment to increase class size in order to institutionalize inefficiency would be wholly inconsistent with the justification for open enrollment and would breach faith with the community. This is my opinion," Wogomot said. Well, you know what, folks? It's more than an opinion. You know, on this show, they were going to put it up tonight, this show isn't politically correct, it's just correct. And, you know, what he is saying there is correct. The fact that a school district deviates from the statewide average of 4% to having 26%, one out of four students come from outside the district, to institutionalize inefficiency would be wholly inconsistent with the justification for open enrollment. Enough said. You can get this, I don't know if we'll put it up on our site or not, but of course, we have it there.
Can I address one other inefficiency, if I may?
Go ahead.
It's very interesting, they have college in the schools, and some of you may or may not be aware that they have, there's an options program in Minnesota that states, "Any junior in good standing may attend a college institution." Okay. The thing that I guess, I think is very inefficient, why do they have college in the schools when Century College is a mile and a half down the road? The other thing that they're depriving the students of, part of college is the social environment, okay? They have to learn to function more independently, make more wise choices, so they're maybe giving them college in the schools, but they're depriving them of the social environment of attending a college. By the way, my daughter went as a junior, two years, so I'm familiar with the issue on both sides. And the sad thing is, it's very expensive. It wouldn't cost them anything to send them to Century, and they're duplicating this within the schools, and at the same time detracting, depriving them of the social environment of that type of higher learning institution. And that's all I'm going to say about the inefficiency.
Well stated. Now, the caller also brought up the issue of the White Bear Press, and they contribute. We used to have a good relationship with one of the reporters over there, but the issue here is this borrowing of monies to keep the system afloat. And we did some calculations here on that a little bit ago, and so, they need to borrow this money, and a million, $1,400,000 was what we came up with, was what they need to borrow in order to have a $14,000 interest payment. So, you know, a million four, you're spending 18 million, well, 45 million totally, athletic fields and some other upgrades, and you don't have enough money for your daily operations. You have to rob from Peter to pay Paul. So, 1.4 million, you know, and of course, they blame it on the state right away, but it's the school districts that are living beyond their means. All right, let's go on to the next clip. Let's play the next clip here.
Without having a report, I guess we're, oh, I guess we're to the next phase, which is, we continued public comment. I want to kind of preclude this a little bit. We've been pretty liberal as far as the last few meetings, we've been going to midnight, and there's been so many things said back and forth, I think it's been hashed and rehashed, but on the same hand, we want people to be able to make their comments. And what we would like you to do is limit your comment to about three minutes. There's a lot of different ideas, there's, I know there's a cathartic effect to this also, but what I would ask, if, you know, two people are going to say the same thing, just have one person say it.
Question. We closed the public hearing at the last meeting, correct?
Yep, we're not, this is comments, not hearing. We're not having a public hearing. We're going to have, just be limited...
The difference.
The difference is, the hearing is the official public hearing where they're having input. This is the last where people can make some comments. It was requested, we'd said it last time, so it's not the same. It's not as formal, let's put it that way. We're just letting people make some comments because there were a lot of, again, just keep it, like I said, two to three minutes. We just want you to get up here and register any concerns we haven't seen before. We've, I said, I think we've spent approximately six hours, two different three-hour sessions at least, getting public comments, so preferably, we'll hear some new ones, or just, we pretty much will have a concept of what you're talking about, so it doesn't have to be a long detailed explanation. So, if we could...
Do you need to make a motion for that?
Yes, let's make a motion for this. I think we, I very much, I very much welcome the input of the public, but we have...
Well, okay, we're going to play a little more. Of course, that was Lauren advocating for the citizens. I don't know if you had the power of the chair there to just say, "I'm taking public comment." I don't know. That would be a good question.
Yes, it would. It's one of those things that's not really clear in Robert's rules, and when someone's making a motion and it's been seconded, you're kind of stuck with it. And I had kind of assumed, the reason I didn't have a high level of concern, I was kind of assuming that this would pass because, you know, we had stayed, talked about it before, and it was going to be going on, we're going to limit the comments, but I was somewhat blindsided by this, and when they voted against it, I, if you look at the look on my face, I was shocked.
Three to four vote.
Yep, they voted against it.
So, you voted for the citizens, Terry?
Terry DeRozier voted.
Voted.
And Mark Wojcik.
They voted on behalf of the citizens, the other four voted against the citizens.
Yeah, they basically wanted to go home, really. They weren't really concerned about public input. And it's, this is a very, a $46 million project is perhaps going to be one of the largest projects we ever have in Grant. Now, this whole problem, whole process has been a PR disaster, they keep changing plans, different things keep coming out, they dumped it on the planning commission. We should have known some of these things months ago. It should have been two conditional use permits, not one, and so, the waters got muddied with that. The mayor's been meeting with them since last June, that's almost a year. So, we, as a planning commission, should have had some inkling of some information going on, but the mayor has said nothing. You know, he hasn't mentioned the mayor's meetings, which I'm sure we'll get to a little bit later.
We're going to have some clip on Tom Carr. I hope, I hope people give him a call when you see this.
Okay.
All right, let's play the next clip here.
I move to make, hear public comments briefly.
Do they have a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
No, discussion, don't we get the next question?
Discussion, okay.
All right, that was the vote, three to, three to four, and no public comment, so the only ones that got to make comments were the paid professionals that the school district paraded in. So, that's, that's what the citizens get to, well, let's, we're going to play some more of that clip there now. We'll play the end of that clip, and then we'll keep moving on. Soon as the end of that clip is ready, let us know. The, we're going to have some piece from the superintendent, Mark Larson, and Tom Carr, the mayor coming up. I do want to, at this point, thank Scott Fogelson for, later on, when we play the piece from over at the Moda Midae School District, Scott had welcomed the camera and me, the reporter, to come over and film it. Of course, you're going to see what happened once we got there, so just remember that. And of course, there, part of this whole process is, is like you said, that they tried to ram, the school district tried to ram this stuff through, push the city up against the wall, push the planning commission up. So, then the city council, under the leadership of Mayor Tom Carr, called an illegal emergency special meeting. You know, emergency meeting is like when you have a tornado, or a hurricane, or a flood come through.
Or a blizzard, something like that.
Well, this was not that case. Calls an illegal meeting, and, you know, to that end, Scott Fogelson is on the, a notice is hereby given about the illegal, illegal meeting that's, I see, which was requested by Tom Carr and Jeff Huber. Those were the ones that initiated the illegal meeting, and of course, this is an honorized statement that Scott Fogelson said, you know, he witnessed the fact that it was done illegally. So, all right, let's play the rest of that clip there.
The, back to the original motion of having public comments? Okay, let's, yes, we should vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So, we have four against. I guess we, I guess we don't have public comment. Sorry, folks. Now, we're going directly to the draft.
All right. Now, you're going to see the reaction of all the citizens. We lander's school, standing room only again, citizens there.
Now, we're go...
And of course, citizens didn't get to share their facts and had to leave in exasperation. Okay, ready for the next clip? You'll see the citizens, I was there, of course, covering this.
Now, we're going directly to the draft.
Are there any reporters that would like to step outside and make some comments?
No public comments.
No public comments.
Thank you.
Any reporters that would like to step outside to see the State of Minnesota Office Auditor, where you have an illegal bid process?
Larry, you have to take it outside, okay?
First, I would have been asked...
No public comment.
I think we have the right to public comment. You didn't allow it as an emergency meeting, which was an illegal meeting.
Mr. Lanu, Larry, you got to get, you got to, got to get going. Out, out. Are we ready to review the grant, or review the draft?
Yes.
Number one, does anybody have? Anyone have a problem with number one?
Mr. Chair.
All right, we're running down on time here. We're going to, we got to get some of these clips played. Let's move right into clip number seven, and this is where we talked about Superintendent Mark Larson does not want the citizens to see...
Phone call.
What goes on behind closed doors.
That's right.
So, we'll play this video, video clip here. It's not that he's...
You're not welcome. I told you there was a telephone.
I was invited by the Grant City Council members.
He's not a part of this, is it? The mayor's part of this, Mary.
The mayor's going to be here. I know at least one of the city council people are going to be here.
Why are you doing this?
Well, because superintendent, now, this is a meeting of the mayors and the superintendent, and I think that the public absolutely has a right to know what plans are being made in the district. I mean, there are the taxpayers.
Bob, don't lecture me. You're not welcome here, and you're being obnoxious about it. Why don't you leave?
No.
If you have any, if you not get an invitation for me...
What you're saying is not that Bob's not welcome here, is the public's not welcome here. The taxpayers are not welcome here, the citizens are not welcome here.
You can interpret it how you want. The fact is, you specifically... The fact is that you specifically are not welcome here.
It's the way-
You specifically are not.
I am here to get the information for the public. Now, if it's a matter of me leaving and the cameraman being here, that's fine. Now, I'll, I'll do that if you, all right, that's, that's good. We'll do that. I, I don't have an objection with that. It's just an issue that, and you and I discussed this before, that we do the show specifically so people understand.
You purposely misinterpret these things, and you throw up these conspiracy theories, and they're wrong, and they're misleading to do that.
No, I try to get the information. All right, Kim, you're here to film. I'll, I'll, call you when we're done. Call me when we're done. Purpose is, of course, to get the information.
Okay. The superintendent says, "Misinterpret the information." This is a third meeting that the cameras were not allowed. Every, you know, these meetings are between the superintendent, school board member, Wogomaster was there, Wogomot, rather, and the mayors from, you know, the cities that are part of the school district. The, where were they, the nine that I read, part of the school district, they're there. They're talking about things like ice arenas, closing libraries, gravel pits, et cetera. And you, the public, you know, along with the school issues, are not invited to know what's going on. So we get down the road, and it's too late for you to have your input. They don't allow it.
If I could add, that this is a third meeting. The first time, they would not allow the, the presentation to be taped at the city hall. The second time, the superintendent was called and asked to tape their black box meeting when they were making all the presentations, and that was also disallowed. Of course, if the camera person would have been a little brighter, he would have known that it was a public meeting and that they would have been allowed anyway. But anyway, do we have a phone call that-
We do. Real quick, and then we got to get that, that last clip in. Caller, you're gonna, you're gonna have about 30 seconds here. Make your point. Go ahead. Caller, are you with us? Question or comment? No, we lost the caller. All right, caller, if you want to call back, let's play the last clip.
Guy that's not even from Grant.
Well, here's a question, is that Mr. Zick said that you or as a council member had requested that we videotape the meeting?
Absolutely not.
Okay, then, there's no, nobody who's invited you to be here, so sorry, you'll have to pack it up and go.
Okay. Are you all elected officials?
We are. Yeah, this is, this is, this is a Monday, this is a whatever meet-
Okay. Had a, had a direct invite, so Mr. Tom Carr and the mayor of Grant, blue shirt there, was either incorrect or lying. Did have an invite by Scott Fogelson to come to the meeting. Hey, Scott was open. You know what? Scott said, "We want people to know what's going on behind these closed doors." Obviously, Mayor Tom Carr doesn't agree with him. All right, let's play the rest of that. Go ahead. Play the rest of the clip.